Good evening. Today is Monday, June 6th, 2023. Fifth, June 5th, 2023. My apologies. The time is 6:04 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Maldonado. Councilmember Bucelato.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez. Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
And Mayor Walter. Here. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up our first call to the public. Okay, I do see two. I do see that they're numbered. Okay, the first is Jerry. M. You come up to the dais, the podium right here. And then there's a timer for three minutes.
Okay, hello, I'm Jerry Mataszewski, and I'm one of the owners of Birds and Bones here in Florence. Before we begin, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing us to come here and speak to you all, and I'd like to especially thank Harvey Kraus, which has been very helpful to us getting started. We purchased Grace's Place in July of 2022. We purchased this restaurant because we were told it was a turnkey operation, including all the fire codes, by the prior fire marshal, I believe his name was Keith. Based on this, we diverted all of our funds towards basically the remodeling. We did the roof, the walls, the flooring. We bought new equipment. We updated the plumbing and electrical with, by local licensed contractors here in Florence. To date, we have invested about $120,000 over and beyond our purchase price. Mid-April, I met with Jennifer, the fire marshal. She came to the restaurant, and I was completely surprised about all the new non-conformances that we now have. It never was an issue for the prior two owners. These include the fire alarm not communicating to the new fire department. Was the new fire, I'm sorry, the fire department. Is there a new system put into the new fire department? Is what I was told. Fire alarm's not communicating with it. So we had to reconfigure all the exit doors, not a big deal. But another huge issue is, is we have a convention oven in there that's not under a hood, and it's been the same for the other two owners. It's exhausted through the roof. Jennifer had told me, don't worry about this for now, because you're operating in the red. Once you start making money, we'll look at putting a hood. If it's good now, why can't it be good later? The investment for that is $34,000, which is a game changer for us. Shortly after we purchased the restaurant, we applied for and were approved for a $7,000 grant from the City of Florence. Thank you for this, for enhancement of the downtown. Requesting our first draw, we submitted receipts and documentation for some of the materials and the labor to do the whole back patio outside. We deposited the check into our account, and we wrote checks against it for additional materials. Lo and behold, four days later, that check was returned, apparently with insufficient funds, which bounced all of our checks, which was a major embarrassment, and we encouraged fees from the bank for that. For now, we are at a stop. Not sure what the next surprise will be. We are asking the city council to help us fund the alarm system and support us moving forward. If not, we will look at all other options, including relocation. Look, we want to do the right thing. Safety and health is our number one priority. We want some help, funding, because we don't have any money any leftover. We already put 120 into it. I can't afford an alarm or another hood, and we'd just like the city council's help for us to move forward and serve the residents of Florence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kyle?
How you guys doing? Thank you for letting us speak. A little about us, we are a barbecue competition team. We travel all over the country. We compete in barbecue contests. We have multiple, we've been on multiple TV shows, Food Network, there's four or five episodes out on us. We have a new show coming out that we were going to do a viewing party for everybody at the restaurant in July, but I don't think we're going to be able to do that. We absolutely fell in love with the city. We've competed here twice at the two barbecue contests you guys have held, and we won them both. We fell in love with the city. We were told there's a turnkey operation restaurant that you guys should try to open, and it's one of my dad and I's dreams is to open this. So the fire system, it does not communicate with the city, and the city has upgraded their system, and when we bought the restaurant, the fire system, we were told, was communicating. Everything was fine. It's a turnkey operation. You can go outside, and you can put a new sign up, open the doors in two or three days, and you can open for business. Then we were recently told there was two or three other changes that we needed to do to the fire system, which we did, and still not communicating. Then we were told, now you need to rip everything out and install a brand-new fire system. The fire system, let's see. What we're asking the City of Florence is to have everything that needs to be done in the restaurant, per the fire code, in writing, so we have the blueprint of exactly everything that needs to be done, and nothing can change after that. We're also asking for the oven to be left as is and not requiring a hood. If we're required a hood, that's another $30,000, $40,000. We're also asking for support from the city, for funding, to help us with this new system. If we can't get help for the funding, then we would have to seriously consider moving our operations somewhere else. I live an hour and a half from here, and I travel every weekend with my father, and we redo the entire restaurant. We work every weekend, we stay the night at the hotel, the local hotel. We love this city, it's awesome. The people are awesome. We were selling food at the last barbecue contest, and people absolutely loved it. We also did one of your guys' Third Fridays, just to kind of show what we were going to be selling. I cooked 46 racks of ribs and 38 pork butts, and I was sold out in an hour and 15 minutes. The whole community showed us support, and we're just asking for support because we don't want to, we don't want to give the building up. So I thank you guys for your support, thank you for letting me talk, and yeah, hopefully we figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on Call to the Public at this time? All right, so just to respond at this time, because I did see some online, and that's nothing that, you know, like mayor, council, like we always make ourselves available for communication, and we always want to help out where we can. So I saw some comments online, and I'm like, hmm, I haven't had any conversations. Let's look into this. So I did reach out to staff, and I just want to provide an update, just as a little bit of a response, and then provide some direction as well. So the response was, "Staff understands the owner of Your Behind Barbecue is frustrated about his status for opening." And I wanted the opportunity to provide background on a couple of items to ensure that you're aware of what prompted this current situation and are working to rectify issues. First, there have been no building permit applications submitted to the town to date because the owner was working on repairs, maintenance, and cosmetic items that did not require permits, except for building modifications that required approval by the Historic District Advisory Commission regarding their signage and front facade, which they have received and completed without the need for building permits. During discussions with staff, the owner expressed that the purchase and subsequent use was supposed to be seamless, as a previous owner had a kitchen, and in meeting with previous staff, they confirmed that if no major alterations were made to the kitchen or building interior, that they should be able to move forward quickly. This was true, but recently staff learned about the purchase of additional kitchen equipment, which changes the fire suppression and permitting landscape of the situation, and these changes triggered code requirements. These items include a new smoker, which necessitated the removal, relocation of the existing kitchen equipment, requiring a modified hood system to accommodate the changes the owner made. Staff met this morning and determined that the changes would require a hood permit, which would ultimately be signed off by a third party once the modifications are made to meet code. Additionally, a permit to locate the outdoor smoker. Staff has worked with the owner during this process to address other public safety items, and as council is aware, the alarm system that we notified users included this building. Staff has not held the opening of this restaurant due to alarm issues for this project or others in similar circumstances, and will work with the existing buildings, including this one, to allow them to secure alternatives as necessary. Staff is looking forward to positively working through this with the owners, as there should not be a choice between our economic development and potentially dangerous conditions the public expects us to address before occupancy. We must be able to do both and find ways to assist them in finding economical, but again, effective solutions. To ensure there is a proper balance of responsibility for building owners/businesses, as well as we want to assist them to understand the realities of existing buildings and the possible modifications that are necessary to maintain them or make them available for safe occupancy going forward. This is out of balance right now, resulting from frustration involved by all. At this time, I'm going to give staff direction to continue working with you and to continue communicating. I do believe that if we communicate before we rise to the level of, you know, airing things out, again, the last thing you want to find out about something is via social media, and that's how I found out there was an issue. So communicate, collaborate, and if there's something, please reach out, okay? We're here, and we can be reached. So that is my response for this. And since there is no other call to the public, I'm closing the first call to the public. There will be, yes?
I would like to say something, and I have spoken. So Lisa, I would like for, at our next meeting, to have a brief presentation to go over the council's rules when it comes to open call to the public, as well as our rules when it comes to responding to social media and the gray area that could possibly create an issue for council members. Because what I don't want is for people to think that we don't care and that we're not responding. I will make a statement that I, I don't agree with the statement that was made, I don't agree with it being said right now, because you have no opportunity to respond to it. You don't get to come back up here and respond to what was just said. I don't feel that was fair, because that, they're the business owner, they know what they're doing, we only know what we've been told, so I don't think it's fair. So I would like a clarification so that everybody understands how open call to the public works, including council members, because I myself have been very confused as to when we can respond and when we can't. We are not allowed to have a discussion, so that's what prevents us from talking to you and then you coming back and saying more. But once we have that presentation, hopefully it'll be clear to everybody, including council members, because I know I'm not the only one that's confused by open call to the public. Thank you.
Lisa and Cliff, as point of clarification, as order of procedure in which I preside, has there been any missteps in procedure this evening?
Mayor members of the council, no. I think the point is, though, that we can put an agenda item on, and if that allows for kind of a deeper explanation of the rules of the call to the public, so people understand there are restrictions and getting in discussions back and forth, so.
I agree with you. I just wanted to make sure there was no illusion that council misspoke or misstepped, and there was no comment made regarding any of us commenting on social media.
What I heard was that they'd like us to do a presentation to make sure that we understand the rules of procedure and how we cannot have discussions without being agendized, and then why possibly a quorum of the council does not comment on agenda items, so that the public understands. That's what I heard.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. I agree. Go ahead. All right, close the first call to the public. Next, we have our presentations. Item 6A is our presentation of the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award for the month of May, Ms. Nicole Hernandez, for her outstanding contributions to the town of Florence.
Hi, Nicole. Good, how are you? Ladies and gentlemen, Nicole Hernandez. Nicole, this is this is one of my favorite awards to present. Can you hear me right this? Or do I need to speak into the microphone like this? Oh, okay. Okay, the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award for the month of May 2023 recognizes Nicole Hernandez for her outstanding contributions to our organization and celebrates these achievements with Nicole, her coworkers, and her family. This award is given once a month, and the recipient is selected based upon letters and nominations received from their peers. These nominations are taken in front of the Employee Incentive Committee, and they read all of them, they go through them, and you are selected based on your merit, and I want to share a letter that was brought forward. I would like to nominate Nicole Hernandez for the Outstanding Employee Award. Nicole was put in as interim library manager after Gloria left. She held the fort down at the library for several months before the new library manager came on board. In addition to her regular job duties, as the new library manager, I came in expecting the library to be in somewhat of shambles due to the shortage of staff, but Nicole had absolutely kept the library running smoothly. The library was so well organized that it made the transition bump-free. Nicole had a notebook put together for me with all pertinent information that I needed. My office was sparkling clean, and it made starting the new position so much easier. I felt very welcomed by Nicole. Nicole is always the first one to volunteer to help with a project, cover the customer service desk, help her fellow coworkers, et cetera, and she does so with a positive attitude. She keeps excellent records on our budget and for all of the ordering that is done. She's extremely organized and can find anything I need when it comes to past purchases, reports on grants, programming information, and more. She gives me regular updates on where we stand on the budget, does a very thorough job researching when ordering items to make sure that we are getting the best prices possible, and she follows through on every task assigned and never misses a deadline. Nicole remembers the small things, like making sure that there are plenty of flyers to hand out, signs to let the patrons know that we're closed for a holiday, that there are always pencils and pens at the circulation desk. She's kind to everyone, goes out of her way to help our patrons, is a great example of teamwork, and most of all, I would be lost without her. When I come in the morning with a mental list of things that need to be done, I find that most of the time Nicole is already taking care of it. She's always kind and respectful of our patrons and her coworkers. Nicole will take on extra tasks even though her plate is already full, and she always asks, is there anything else I need, before she leaves for the day? I don't think I would have survived my first month without Nicole. She has turned into my right-hand woman. I am constantly impressed with her work ethic and dedication to the library. I think Nicole is extremely deserving of the Outstanding Employee Award. So do your peers at the Employee Incentive Committee, and so does your council. Congratulations, and would you like to say a few words?
I really enjoy working with my coworkers and everybody here at the town. I wasn't expecting to say anything, so I didn't have anything prepared, but I appreciate the kind words, Lisa.
Next, we have a presentation on Community Facilities District Financing by Mr. Mark Reader.
Mayor, council, tonight I have the privilege of introducing someone I've known for a few years actually coming here. I've known him for every day since I got to Camp Verde, and now have the pleasure of working with them here in Florence. So you have the folks here, I just introduced you, at least there's a couple other people that, if you have questions, they're here for that, but Mark will be doing the major presentation. But Kathy Bowman is the attorney, as you know, for the CFD district, as well as Paul Gales, who also works with Mark Reader. So without further ado, Mark, if you want to come up and give us a good general start. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Nice to be back in Florence again. Really enjoyed your employee recognition presentation. That was really a nice thing. Well, good evening, and as you know, I've, I know most of the, have worked with most of the council members. We may have a couple new ones. And I think, as you all know, and for the new ones, I've really had the privilege of working with the town of Florence for, I don't know, Becky and Lisa, 20, 25 years. I think it's more like 25 years back in the day. So I've really enjoyed my representation of your town. It started really back in the early 2000s, and I think, as you're aware, Polte Homes and the development community approached the town of Florence way back in the early 2000s to form what's known as Community Facilities Districts. And I'm going to share a nice aerial view here. We know you're obviously very familiar with this area. This aerial is a little old, and we're going to get this updated, but it gives you a really good idea. Back in 2005, the town of Florence worked very closely with Polte Homes and some other developers relative to the formation by the town of Florence of two Community Facilities Districts, also known as CFDs. You'll hear us go back and forth on that, okay? And what I like to tell and remind our town councils is that CFDs are living, breathing, political subdivisions formed by our cities and towns around the state. I would say about 25% of our cities and towns around the state have formed Community Facilities Districts, the Board of Directors of which are our town councils. So obviously, as you know, to the extent that we do any business with a CFD, you're on the Board of Directors, and you will make those decisions. So I just wanted to kind of give you a quick reminder. We have two districts, and the red is District Number Two. It's about 1,100 acres, and in the blue is our District Number One. That's about 6,000 to 7,000 acres, a huge development that will be developed out over the coming years. CFD Number Two is about 50% built out, as you probably know, in terms of residential development. So my presentation tonight is going to focus on District Number Two. I think, as you're aware, we're working with town staff and the development community as it relates to District Number One, so we're going to be coming back to you on that at some point as the homework is completed. So I really want to focus tonight, I think, as you're aware, on District Number Two in the red there. As far as our goals tonight, it's been a while since we've really had much business to do with District Number Two, but our goal tonight is to bring you all up to speed. A lot of you are already up to speed on it, but we want to bring you up to speed on some new information, and we want to make sure that we answer all your questions that you have as it relates to CFD and as it really relates to the issuance of some bonds that are forthcoming. And as you know, bonds are nothing more than a promissory note that will be issued by the CFD at some point, the bond monies of which are used to reimburse the developer for the public infrastructure and the enhanced public infrastructure that they put in the development. Number two there, we're going to focus on general obligation bonds tonight, which are bonds, as you know, that are issued and repaid by property taxes. And when the development agreement was entered into back in 2005, there was an agreement to set the property tax, the secondary property tax rate at $3.25 per $100 of assessed value. You also are aware that over the years, we've come before the CFD Board, and we've issued special assessment bonds. That's a different type of bond. As you know, I'm not going to get into the details of that tonight. We'll do that at a later time, and I want to focus on item number two up there, the general obligation bonds. As I mentioned to you, CFDs are fairly common. They're becoming a little more common right now because of inflation, land costs, et cetera, and interest rates have risen, so it's an efficient way of which to raise some capital, or a more efficient way to raise some capital. Down below, I talked to you about when the district was formed, back in there, really The district has grown substantially. I'm going to show a graph to you here in a moment that shows that you had District Number Two had its best year ever in terms of the tax base growth. As a result of that, that generates the ability to issue some bonds within the confines and the requirement of the 325. I'm going to walk you through that. And number four there, just to again bring you up to speed, at the moment, Polte is indicating to us that this will likely be the last sale of bonds for District Number Two to reimburse Pulte. I mentioned this in my introduction, recognize a lot of cities here that have considered and formed over the years Community Facilities Districts primarily for master planned residential communities across the state. We do utilize them from time to time for commercial and industrial projects, so they are a tool in our toolbox that is helpful to our towns as they grow as a way to attract development and to put together very nice projects. So I just wanted to share this with you. Counties can also do it as well. District Number Two, how's it doing? It's doing really well, as you can see, and we thought we'd just share this information with you. They have the Sun City Active Adult Component, and you can see there, we just got these numbers from Polte. There's about 859 closed residential homes in the active adult area of Sun City, and the traditional homes, Parkside, they call it out there, almost 700. So we have about 1,551 homes out there closed over the last 20 years, about 18 years, I guess, with a number of units currently under construction. They're about half-built out, and as you drive out there, you'll see that all-in-all development's doing very well. So we wanted to just share kind of the home closings here and the number. Okay. Now, as you all know, property taxes in Arizona is kind of a complicated endeavor, very complicated laws, so I'm just going to walk you through a couple things here. Every year, the county assessor, the Pinal County Assessor, goes out and they value all the property within the boundaries of the Community Facilities District. They do the same thing for the town of Florence, they do the same thing for the county, the Florence Unified, et cetera. And we just got the new numbers from the county for the 2324 budget year, and as you can see, it went from 38.1 to almost $57 million over the last year. So as you can see, that is the largest increase. Now, these are about 15 months old, okay, because it takes the counties in Arizona a little while to do their homework and do all the models, and so I know we've had a little bit of a slowdown, as you all know, as a result of the Federal Reserve raising rates, but you can see here that that's really good news relative to the continued growth and development of District Number Two in this case. So that's kind of the market value, if you will, not necessarily the fair market value, but the county's value, which is conservative. And then they convert this to an assessed value called net limited, and this is what the property tax rate is based on. And they put a cap on this, that's why you don't see as high of a jump in 2324 as you did on the previous page. But $4 million in growth, property tax-based growth going into the next budget year, so all in all good. And I guess if you go back in time, you can see each year there's been nice, steady 4%, 5%, 6% growth each year within the boundaries of the district. So we'll call that good news. Okay, tax rates. I mentioned this to you a couple of times in terms of what the financial model that was set up years ago and is outlined in the development agreement, that the district would consider the issuance of these general obligation property tax bonds, right? Payable from a property tax only within the boundaries of District Number Two because they benefit from the infrastructure. And you can see the town has done a very good job of maintaining that 325 up on top, okay? We also have an agreement with Polte where the district will levy 30 cents per $100 of net limited assessed value, and the town slash district will collect the 30 cent property tax revenues for maintenance and operations within the boundaries of the CFD. So those are the two tax rates, one for AMNOL at 30 and one for the property tax general obligation bonds at 325. Okay, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, back to Ms. Cordas' question. These are the public infrastructure projects that Polte, over the years, has publicly procured, worked with the town, and our Public Works Department, and this is the public infrastructure on the left-hand side, about 18, pushing $19 million that Polte has already spent, okay? So they take all the development risk, of course. That was part of the transaction that we set up. We're not going to do it in advance, in other words. So they put 19 million in the ground, and the prior bond issues that we've worked with you all in the past, we've issued about 8.2 million, 8.3 million in the second column, and that 8.3 million was then used to reimburse Polte for those projects on the left-hand side, okay? So they had some reimbursement still available, so let's call it 19 million minus 8.3 million. So they have roughly about $6.6 million of public infrastructure still eligible to be reimbursed. And again, we can only do that if we have the bonding capacity, the bonding requirement within the 325 requirement, okay? So because the tax base has grown so significantly the past couple of years, then obviously they have the bonding capacity, we are estimating at the moment, to issue, you know, $7 million, I'm rounding, to then reimburse Polte for the projects, as you see there. Spirit Way Phase One, $465,000. Spirit Way Phase Three, $1,750,000. Merrill Ranch Parkway Phase Three, $1,005,000. Hunt Highway Phase Three, $1,009,000, almost. Hunt Highway Phases One and Three pedestrian crossing, $675,000, and some landscaping for $330,000. So that is the public infrastructure that we are reconciling, checking, double-checking with Public Works, and eligible to be reimbursed with a forthcoming transaction. Okay, I'll pause there. I know that was a lot. I think I've got two more slides, and then I'll go ahead and entertain your questions. So questions so far before I get into the final two slides. Okay. All righty. So you're in budget season now, so we know you love spreadsheets and numbers. It's a big job, I know. And so let me just walk you through this fairly quickly, but there is some detail here that we want you to have a very good understanding of. Okay, column one is our fiscal year, of course. We're in 2223 now. It'll be over in about three weeks. You're wrapping up '23, as you know. The property tax base in column two, net limited assessed value, went from 26 to 30, and as I shared with you on the previous slide, the county suggesting to us now, we don't think this number is going to change, is going to be 34 million, budget year 2324. That was that big increase. The higher the assessed value, the more revenues we have, obviously. You can see the percentage growth, 15.7% this year, 12.7% next year, 10.6% in '2122. And then we just kind of went conservative on you and just estimated about 4% thereafter. What's going to happen, if this is our last bond issue, right, which Polte is suggesting to us now, unless the town wanted to pursue some authorization for a public works project, you're going to see that your tax rate is going to start to drop. Let me walk you through that. So column four is the other bonds that we've issued together over the years. That's on the tax rolls, that's being levied. And then we modeled in, if you can see in column five and six, a new bond issue somewhere around 7.2 million. Bear with me on that, okay? You see the 7165 at the bottom of column five. And you can see what the total debt service is. So let's call it a million a year, a little over a million a year. And then you can see the tax rate, which is very important to all of us, and you can see in '2122, we have $3.25, good. '2223 this year, about the same, good, we're meeting our 325 objective. And then with the increase of the tax base, you can see there in column eight, that we'll go down to, we'll probably go 325 in '2324, a little cushion there, and then if we keep our debt service level, but your tax base grows, your tax rate's going down. So you can see how we're going to go 325, okay, $3.09, $3, you follow me here? And then 289, because again, our tax base is expected to grow because growth and development will continue to occur, is everybody's expectations, that we'll have that tax rate over time gravitate down to a lower number, okay? So we wanted to, and that pretty much concludes my presentation on the details, and then, of course, as you know, we're going to be communicating back with you on this district as well as District Number One here in the coming month. So with that, I hope that was helpful, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, and I'm glad to entertain any questions of the council.
Council members, do you have any additional questions or comments?
I do appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening and share this information.
Thank you. Our plans are, at the moment, unless staff tells us otherwise, I think we'll be back in front of you on July 3rd for additional council decisions, and I'll look forward to seeing you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
At this time, we have item number seven, which is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the Service Agreement Abandonment with the Educational Services LLC ending June 30th, 2024. B, approval to renew the Gary Johnson Service Agreement extending through June 30th, 2025, with option to extend two additional years. Item C, Resolution Number 1874-23, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Arizona, accepting tribal gaming funds granted by the Hilo River Indian Community in the amount of $65,000 for fitness center equipment. Item D, approval of the April 25th, May 1st, May 10th, and May 15th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes. One, Charles Whitler Rodeo Ground's Advisory Board Minutes of April 27th, 2023. Two is Historic District Advisory Board Minutes of March 29th, 2023. Three is Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of April 6th, 2023. And four is Police Safety Personnel Retirement Systems Minutes of October 28th, 2021. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody that objects to any items at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, and that motion carries. Item Eight, New Business. Eight A is Resolution Number 1870-23, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence. Pinal County, Arizona, approving the Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2324 Classification and Compensation Plan, including a 6% increase for cost of living adjustment for all full-time employees, adding employee positions specified herein, removing the library assistant position and adjusting pay grades and titles as directed during the regular Town Council Meeting on June 5th, 2023, with implementation effective July 1st, 2023. Ms. Catherine Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This evening, we're bringing before you the Classification Compensation Plan and Pay Ranges. In November, you all passed our adjusted pay scale and asked that council during budget season, or I'm sorry, staff during budget season, review where the pay scale and pay ranges sat according to market, and we made some adjustments to some of the positions on the scale. So during our May 10th budget discussion, you directed staff to apply a 6% COLA to the pay scale, which we've done, and it's reflected in the fiscal year 2324 budget. And again, there are additions of some staffing to create clear growth of career planning in the town, and also we are taking away the one position, but the person in the position will be reclassified as an administrative assistant. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those questions.
Council members, do you have any questions? Seeing them, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1870-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval/disapproval of adopting the 2023-2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. You have been presented the Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. You have been presented the Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. You have been presented the Capital Improvement Plan.
Whitler Rodeo Ground's Advisory Board Minutes of April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Two is Historic District Advisory Board Minutes of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Three is Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of April sixth, twenty-twenty-three. And four is Police Safety Personnel Retirement Systems Minutes of October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody that objects to any items at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Item eight, new business. Eight A is Resolution Number eighteen seventy dash twenty-three, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the Town of Florence Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four Classification and Compensation Plan, including a six percent increase for cost of living adjustment for all full-time employees, adding employee positions specified herein, removing the library assistant position, and adjusting pay grades and titles as directed during the regular Town Council Meeting on June fifth, twenty-twenty-three, with implementation effective July first, twenty-twenty-three. Ms. Catherine Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This evening, we're bringing before you the, um, Classification and Compensation Plan and Pay ranges. Um, in November, you all passed our, um, adjusted pay scale and asked that council during budget season, or, I'm sorry, staff during budget season, uh, review where the, um, uh, pay scale and pay ranges sat, um, according to market. And, um, we made some adjustments to some of the positions on the scale. So, um, during our May tenth budget discussion, um, you directed staff to, um, apply a six percent COLA to the pay scale, which we've done, and it's reflected in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, and again, there are additions of some staffing to create clear growth of career planning in the town. And also, we are, um, taking away the one position, but the person in the position will be reclassified as an administrative assistant. Um, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those questions.
Council members, do you have any questions? Seeing them, we need a motion.
I make a motion, uh, to Resolution Number eighteen seventy dash twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval, disapproval of adopting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Um, you have been presented the Capital Improvement Plan, and there's been much discussion on it. Uh, our total numbers, this is a planning document that's in flux all the time. So, uh, as maybe grants come on board and pay for things, we remove those as being an expenditure of the town. It'll be a grant program, so that will go away. So there's an opportunity for some of these things to be paid for with other sources. So our total budgeted projects for this year is forty-six million, six hundred and two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the total capital for multiple years is one hundred and twenty-eight million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. It's a, a very aggressive, um, capital plan with a lot of things going on in the town, uh, improving our infrastructure. So we're coming to you tonight to ask for you to go ahead and adopt by motion the Capital Improvement Plan.
Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the adopt, adopting, and have the adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Resolution Number eighteen seventy-one dash twenty-three, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the receipts, expenditures, and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of time for a public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the state-imposed expenditure limitation and voter-approved excess amount, declaring an emergency. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, uh, thank you this evening for, uh, accepting our presentation of the tentative budget. The tentative budget allows you to go on to next fiscal year. It also sets the limit for the amount of budget that you have. You can only decrease the budget after this adoption. Our total budget, um, for this year is eighty-seven million, five hundred and one thousand, seventy-four dollars. We have exclusions of twenty-seven million, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And this leaves an expenditure limitation of sixty million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and, uh, forty-six dollars. Our, um, expenditure limitation this year is one hundred and forty-one million, fifty-five thousand, and eight dollars. Uh, we have a, a large cap now where we can, uh, feel comfortable in doing our budgeting and getting our project done as necessary. I did wanna explain, the exclusions are for any financing that we have. Those are excludable funds. Uh, the projects are excludable. Uh, we have some statutory, um, revenues that are excludable. Our debt service is excludable, so we go through and evaluate that and subtract those out of the total. And those are reported to the Auditor General. A public hearing will be held on July third, twenty-twenty-three, at six P.M. to, for council to evaluate the final budget and then if, uh, and adopt it if you so choose to do so. Uh, it's to receive, we're gonna have a public comment at this, uh, to receive comment on the budget itself from the citizens. Um, also, at this time, we'll also be, uh, stating the, uh, tax levy for, for the year, and that will be, come back before council on July seventeenth for adoption.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number one eight seven one dash two-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item D, discussion approval, disapproval of the Communication Services License Agreement between the Town of Florence and Airbeam LLC for the installation of fiber optics in the town's right-of-way south of the Gila River. Mr. Trenton Schaefer.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, uh, this agreement tonight is in regards to installing fiber optic cabling in the town right-of-way. I would like to give just a little bit of brief information about Airbeam, who they are, and what this means to the town. Airbeam was founded in two thousand and four and is currently Arizona's leading provider of fixed wireless internet services and fiber-to-home in rural Arizona. Airbeam currently provides fixed wireless internet services to the citizens and businesses in the greater Florence area, including rural citizens outside of the town limits. Airbeam is now looking to expand that infrastructure by providing fiber-to-home and fiber-to-business broadband internet services in the greater Florence area. The initial project will consist of five phases, deploying fiber optic infrastructure within the Town of Florence right-of-way, which will provide high-speed, low-cost internet to Florence residents and businesses, and provide the infrastructure for future expansion to Florence Gardens and the surrounding area, Cactus Forest, uh, and Anthem. So let's pull up a, a map real quick. I'll show you the phases before I move on here. Let's make sure we're sharing to the public. Let's get that off the screen. Alright, there we go. So this is the map of the downtown Florence area. This is the five-phase deployment, the initial deployment. The Airbeam will be starting. Phase one is west of Main Street, through our residence here, and also behind the local businesses running down Main. Phase two encompasses the east side of Main Street and the businesses encompassed in there, and all the additional housing, uh, and buildings and businesses all the way up to the seventy-nine. If I move too fast, just let me know. Phase three, there we go, is the expansion of conduit further out east through the prison complex, and an additional, uh, conduit laid for future expansion. Phase four is southwest of Butte, west of Main, to the businesses and residents in that area. You can see there's the medical examiner office and the additional offices down there. And then phase five encompasses the rest of the south end of town, uh, and the additional businesses and residents in the area. I will note that the conduit that runs north on the seventy-nine, they are placing splice points so they can run further down west, down Hunt Highway, up to Anthem, and additionally up north into the Florence Gardens, Caliente Parks area. Additionally, down south, uh, they have additional conduit and splice points down here to run further down south on the seventy-nine, down into Cactus Forest and the adjacent areas. Are there any questions about that deployment and that phase deployment? Again, this phase deployment can change a little bit in locations depending on the permits, the, uh, access to the poles and everything as that comes in, so that they may kinda hit a little bit different areas. There may be change orders, but this is the initial five-phase deployment they plan to do. I will note that every one of these deployments have what's called a FET, which is a fiber entry terminal. Uh, so literally, if you call Airbeam and want connected, they can be out within a day or two and, and have your house connected, just as any other internet provider would do. Something to note about this, uh, fiber internet is it's much faster than your typical cable internet. It's much more reliable. I'll get a little more to that, into that here in a minute. I just wanna show you some of their pricing right on their website. They have additional, or three different plans, all the way down to fifty-five dollars a month. And I can tell you that I have staff that work for me and residents here that pay for a half that speed, two hundred megabit, and are paying well over a hundred dollars a month with our current providers. So let's pop back over here.
Trent, while you do that, what is the timeframe for each one of those phases?
A good question. So the initial phase one, they're ready to get boots on the ground. They're, they're primed and ready. I believe they already do have some, uh, permits in place for some of the conduit legwork outside the limits up to the town. And they do have actually a, um, CO site already sitting on, at Well Five, something that they did with us a couple of years ago, um, ready to, to connect from there. So they estimate anywhere between twelve to eighteen months to be completely completed with this project, and it's roughly two to three million dollars' worth of infrastructure. So I wanna discuss just a little bit about the impact of fiber and high-speed broadband. The lack of adequate high-speed broadband availability in rural areas compared to metropolitan areas continues to be a challenge. Uh, that challenge was exacerbated by the COVID pandemic, forcing nearly all communication to be conducted from home, further exposing the insufficiency and lack of broadband available in many rural areas, including Florence. I know our staff had issues during the pandemic, a lot of people did, uh, with connectivity with our current providers and reliability. Furthermore, the pandemic brought forth an awareness that most businesses can operate with a remote workforce, right? So workers began relocating to rural areas, away from crowded cities, cities, but however, there were rural areas where they had limited bandwidth, limited access, slow internet, uh, resulting in lower productivity, lagging education, and poorer outcomes overall. The benefits of fiber broadband go far and wide. It's less costly to maintain compared to other technologies. Fiber optic internet is ideal for rural areas. It's more dependable over long distances, a critical consideration for customers who are far from the big city. It also works faster and more reliably than cable, satellite, and DSL internet. This also means employees can work from, for any industry, uh, for anywhere in the world without leaving their home. Entrepreneurs, creative professionals, consultants can connect, uh, with their employer, employers or clients. Ultra-low latency, high reliability, symmetrical speeds, remote employees can video chat in real time, send and receive large files, utilize web-based collaboration tools, and optimize their productivity. There's a correlation between the access to high-speed broadband networks and economic prosperity. And it makes sense, right? People living in communities with fast internet access can take advantage of all the economic and educational opportunities available online. And that's not to mention the social, political, and healthcare opportunities afforded them as well. So the FCC is working to close that digital divide, but slower than everybody else. And a lot of people think this is a government problem, to, uh, to deal, or government undertaking, right, to bring in this fiber. So the FCC last year increased the minimum broadband internet speed requirements to, from twenty-five slash three, that means twenty-five megabits download speed, three megabits upload speed, which is horrid, and then, uh, pushed it to a one hundred slash twenty rule. Again, one hundred megabit download, twenty megabit upload. And the upload is what kills everybody, especially when you're video chatting. Download, a hundred megabits is pretty good. Uh, so, but they discussed a separate future goal of one thousand slash five hundred, which is much more acceptable. FCC Chairwoman Rosenwinkel stated that the need of internet users long ago surpassed FCC's twenty-five slash three speed metric, especially during a global health pandemic that moves so much of our life online. The hundred slash twenty metric also aligns with the, uh, federal government's Affordable Connectivity Program. And I really wanna make sure I said that tonight. There's a program called the ACP, the Affordable Connectivity Program. A lot of citizens I've found aren't aware of that. A lot of people aren't aware of that. You have, there's an eligibility requirement, and it's basically for lower-income families, people on Medicaid, things like that. Uh, but if you meet those, uh, eligibility requirements, you get a stipend of thirty dollars, and it's automatically applied through your ISP. You don't have to worry about getting a check later or anything like that. And that's actually available on the FCC's website, FCC.gov/ASP, and it breaks down the eligibility requirements. And it's actually, it's pretty robust i- in regards to a lot of government programs. Um, you either have to be at a poverty level or a certain level, or beyond Medicaid, federal housing, Section Eight, supplementally secure, uh, security income, things like that. On WIC, if you're on WIC, you can get access to this. I know a lot of people that use it further up in the Santan Valley. So it's a, it's a really good program. So high-speed broadband is part of our infrastructure. It's like water and electricity, right? If you don't have it, you're not gonna be competitive. Access to high-speed broadband is propelled by fiber deployment. It's a great equalizer for our community. It's the first step to bringing the digital divide and bringing equal economic opportunities to all, regardless of where we live. Any questions?
I have a question, another question, Trent. What is, how, so what they're gonna put in the ground, how often does that have to be replaced?
Great question.
And at whose cost is it?
Great question. Uh, it'd be at the cost of Airbeam. It's their infrastructure. Again, they're just laying in our right-of-way. And this agreement really is put in place to just protect our right-of-ways. The, the entire agreement's worded and, and built in that way. Um, so they don't have to be replaced very often. Fiber optic is very, very robust. It can sit out there and get blasted by the sun. It doesn't bother it. The, the biggest thing that happens to fiber is somebody digs it up or knocks down a line somewhere. Uh, that cost, again, would be, we footed by Airbeam. Uh, something else to mention, uh, with the benefit of this, uh, agreement and it being mutually beneficial, is Airbeam's offered to provide in-kind services to us. So our wastewater treatment plant currently runs off fixed wireless. Fixed wireless is two radio dishes, somewhere up on a tower, somewhere on your house, whatever, kinda like DirecTV kinda stuff. Um, it's, it's not very fast. It's, can be unreliable, especially in weather conditions like rain. You get what's called rain fade. Your signal degrades. Um, same thing with satellite internet. If it's really cloudy or a dust storm, your internet goes out. If the wind blows, your internet goes out. Um, so they've offered to come in and be our, um, our fixed wireless, um, liaison, I guess. They'll come in and put up fixed wireless sites for us. They've done this in the past, past. We have multiple agreements that we've done with Airbeam in the past. They've come and saved our day many a times. Um, but it's all through wireless. And so we're really looking forward to getting some fiber infrastructure to our, to our town buildings. So within this agreement, they've offered to provide that fiber connectivity to any of our town facilities that aren't currently connected by fiber and connect this into that loop, um, which is, which is a really big deal. It's, it's really expensive to run fiber, so, um, that'll really help out a lot.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, the Communication Service Licensing Agreement between the Town of Florence and Airbeam LLC for the installation of fiber optics in the town right-of-way south of the Gila River.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Item E is Resolution Number eighteen seventy-five dash twenty-three. This is discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, accepting the warranty deed from KPHV LLC for fee estate of the described real property for Hunt Highway right-of-way pursuant to the conditions contained in the agreement for the sale of real property between the Town of Florence and KPHV LLC purchase agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the attached warranty deed and purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars in authorized budget capacity, in the amount of two hundred thousand to be moved from General Government CIP Fund eleven to the Transportation Development Impact Fee Fund five oh five. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Simply put, our design requires the widening of Hunt Highway in order to install the turn lanes and to change the phasing of the traffic signal. That widening needs to be, um, to one side, to the north, 'cause to the south is the skip facility. So we don't have the ability to what they would call symmetrically widen the intersection. It has to be asymmetrically widened to the north. So in order for us to do that, we have to acquire real property from the adjacent property owner. Uh, as part of that, uh, we negotiated and performed an appraisal for this property, and we have an agreement with the property owner, as well as this item includes, um, budgetary, uh, authority transferred over to the Development Impact Fee Fund so that we can make this purchase. Again, this is not transferring money from one area to another. It's just budgetary authority. Are there any questions about this agenda item tonight?
Council, go ahead. Council member?
Um, so I don't expect you to have a presentation like Trenton does where you have digital slides in, but can you describe for the public where this property is located?
It is to the north of Hunt Highway, literally opposite of Addaway. In that area right there is, is where the widening will occur and where this property is.
Thank you. And next time, can you please have pictures at least? That'd be great. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Council, Vice Mayor?
Is this the last piece of right-of-way we need?
Is this the last piece of right-of-way we need to start that intersection improvement?
Right-of-way, yes, but we still have that temporary construction easement that we believe we have an agreement with that property owner as a license agreement. And I believe that will be coming at the next meeting or the meeting after.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. If there's no other questions or comments, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1875-23.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, discussion approval disapproval of authorizing the town manager to take all steps necessary to purchase a water storage tank for the Charles Whitlow rodeo grounds in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. Mr. Chris Salas.
This item seems like a very long time in the making. We have been working with the concessionaire to figure out his needs based on the production of our well, which at most would have ever been is thirty-five gallons per minute. And so that would have by far outstripped, his needs would have outstripped the capacity of the well that we would have ever put in there as a non-exempt well. So when we've originally started meeting with the concessionaire, we figured that we were probably going to need somewhere on the order of thirty to sixty thousand gallons of storage on that site. And that would be just for the purposes of dust control, would have nothing to do with the current existing structures and the fire approvals thereof. But we are looking forward to expansions in the future, working with Mr. Paul King. There are future CIP projects. And over the next, I think, three to four years, with some of those additional structures being identified, there will be future improvements for compliance with the fire code. And so the idea would be to not size this initial storage tank for just the needs of the concessionaire, but to also help us in the future by going essentially a portion of the, the requirements of the International Fire Code. So this would serve as kind of a halfway improvement where we wouldn't have to do a third tank. And we were hoping to get it done this fiscal year. There's still a possibility of doing that with an approval tonight.
Council, any? Council, any questions or comments regarding this project? All right. With that, we need a motion.
Didn't turn on. I make a motion to approve for the town manager to take all, where am I at? Yes, all steps necessary to purchase a water storage tank for Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, discussion approval disapproval of expending police vehicle impact fees for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive truck and a utility vehicle in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, and authorized budget transfer in the amount of two-hundred thousand to be moved from General Government CIP Fund XI to the Police Development Impact Fee Fund 508. She falls.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. You all know that the Town of Florence is expanding. You all know that you've been out in the desert, riding around out there in just some places that we cannot get to with our current fleet of vehicles. Boston Butte, we're getting ready to grow. Florence Copper is looking at, what, another one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-two acres of land that they're getting ready to go and start developing. Eldorado Holdings just came up with forty-one, one-hundred acres that they're getting ready to go and develop. In trying to make sure that we take care of our citizens, we want to anticipate what our calls for service are going to be back in that area. I can go back and tell you about at least three calls for service that we've had where the assistance of these types of vehicles would have helped with our calls for service. We've had two missing person cases that I believe had we had these type of vehicles, we could have had a better outcome. We've also had an aggravated assault case where just a little bit north of Arizona Farms in inclement weather, trying to drive back there in the mud, could not get back there. I think it delayed our, our response time, probably by about five minutes. And then trying to get back out of there. I think one of our vehicles got stuck. So we're looking for council to sit back and approve and give us an opportunity to get some forward-drive vehicles so we can go and respond better to calls for service. And we don't have to rely so much on our sister agencies to come in and go and give us those support. Town of Florence is a great town. We have a great police department, and we need to be able to go and handle our own calls for service. The additional piece of this is, is our partnership with the fire department. We can respond to their calls, and they respond to our calls. This will be a great partnership with them as well. Should we have to go and provide medical service, we'll be able to go and transport them in should we need to. They have those big, heavy vehicles, and I know Walter will probably go and say those vehicles will get stuck too. So here's a great opportunity for us to advance and get some vehicles that we know can go and operate in sort of rough terrain and be able to increase our response time for calls for service. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve expending of police vehicle impact fees for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive truck and utility vehicle in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, and authorize the budget transfer in the amount of two-hundred thousands to be moved from the General Government CIP Fund XI to the Police Development Impact Fee Fund 508.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is our legislative report. Mr. Jeffrey Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. It is the one-hundred-and-forty-eighth day of this legislature, which has been recessed for almost a month. Lawmakers are scheduled to return next Monday, June 12th, and are planning to take action on a number of outstanding items, including the residential rental tax as well as housing and zoning bill. Regarding the rental tax, the League has proposed letting go of that tax in exchange for an increase in shared revenues to offset losses in affected communities. They are waiting to hear back from the governor's office on that potential proposal. And regarding housing and zoning, from, over the weekend, the League said that they are very close to an agreement on the housing issue, which will address a number of items, including accessory dwelling units, duplex, triplexes, and small lot sizes, at-risk permits, single-room occupancy matters, limited parking around light rail, and ten percent density bonus for affordable products, excuse me, projects. Obviously, not all of those provisions impact Florence, but it's very positive to hear that the League is making progress on a comprehensive housing package. That's all the updates I have for this time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Council, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have our town manager report.
Yeah, a couple of things. I just want to bring highlight to the visitor's center, request for proposal. We're in internal staff review of that over the next couple of weeks. Expect to get that out by the end of June for the anticipation that between now and the end of December, we'll go through a process for those services publicly. So just heads up, I know we've discussed that a couple of months ago, but now we're headed in that direction, and the timing is in that. So if you have questions, certainly get ahold of me. The other one is, just to point out calendar-wise, in a couple of weeks, we would normally meet. That is a holiday. And so we will be meeting on the Tuesday night, just to point that out and make sure that everybody's aware, instead of nineteenth, which would be two weeks, the twentieth is when we'd meet, that Tuesday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Department reports. Is there any member of our council that has a question for any of the department heads? All right. Next, we have our second call to the public. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak? I see Ms. Sherry Har. If you want to go ahead and unmute her.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. How are you this evening?
I'm doing great. Thank you. Councilwoman Corvus, I just want to say I appreciate you asking for a presentation on the rules in regards to the, open for the public. I think that's good for all of us. I think the more training we have, the better for all of us. You guys can, as well. So thank you for asking that. And then secondly, when the gentleman, the two gentlemen did the presentation for the barbecue, I think an important fact that he presented was not addressed, and that was stating that the town's check bounced. Can we look more into that, or can Ms. Jimenez give us an explanation why that happened? And if it did happen, I think that if they received some, you know, bounce fees or whatever fees from the bank, I think the town has an obligation to make that right. And I hope that we can work with that business and make this a win-win, because I think all of us are really looking forward to having that business here in town. And then I want to thank also Councilwoman Bucelata for answering my email regarding to see, click, fix. And I did get a response, so thank you so much for forwarding that. And I look forward again to working very closely with each and every one of you. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And yes, I will actually have our staff provide an update regarding that check. And I also would like us to review the policy, because I recall that we didn't send out checks until after the work was completed, and to my knowledge, the work hasn't been completed. So if you could just provide an update to that.
Yeah, so our policy requires that the check be written once they apply for it at the end of the month, and the work has to be completed inspected accordingly. The, the other part of that is, it's a bank error. It happens. It was not because there was insufficient funds in our account. It's just a bank error. And so I, as, as you saw, I walked out afterwards, and we'll be discussing that as a part of the conversation tomorrow, so. The fees, sorry.
All right. Thank you so much. And we have Bonnie, oh, Bonnie Barriola. You can go ahead and unmute her.
She'll be good to go. Can you hear us?
All right.
Not sure.
Okay. Ms. Barriola, you can go ahead and email us. I unmute. Okay, proceed.
I don't hear anything.
You're unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Ms. Barriola? All right.
I will.
Want me to allow her to talk again?
We can give it one more go.
Okay.
I unmuted it. I unmuted my, my computer. It's not working.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and try talking right now, because I heard your last sentence, and if it doesn't work, then please go ahead and email us.
I think she muted herself again. Oh, wait.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. All right. So we cannot hear you. We're having, it looks like some technical difficulties on your end. So if you would go ahead and email us, that would be helpful. We're going to go ahead and close the second call to the council, unless there's somebody in the audience that would like to speak.
Forget it.
All right. Next, we have our call to the council. Councilmember Corvus.
I don't have anything other than my request that I made earlier, and I will clarify. My request wasn't implementing that there was any misstepping tonight. My request was so that we have a very clear clarification for everybody, because I know if I, as a council member, am confused as to when we can speak during calls of the public and when we can't. I think it's beneficial that everybody understand how that process works. And I know we have new council members, we have new people that attend meetings that haven't attended meetings before. And so it's just very important that we all understand how the process works and why at times when you really want a response from us, and trust me, there are many times I want to respond, because I am a person who deals in facts, not rumors. I hate gossip. I hate when people are added to a conversation unwillingly and unknowingly, because they don't have the opportunity to defend themselves or to clarify. So when in social media, we put out information that is one-sided or not accurate, or however you want to put it, it's difficult for anybody to engage in a conversation, because what I have found is people don't want to hear the actual answer. They want to continue to stay in the misinformation. And I will refer back to when, the rumor I have heard for nine years is that the Town of Florence returned down Walmart coming to our town, which, one, I don't want Walmart here anyways, but it never happened. And I don't care how many times I have a conversation with somebody that is, lived here for a very long time, I'm never going to be right, no matter what I produce as evidence. And so I'm trying to avoid those type of situations. And so I think it's good if the public understands why none of us are on those social media sites replying. Occasionally, you will see some of us ask a question for clarification, or there are instances where, I know in Anthem, there was a comment about the property next to the church being zoned residential. I did clarify that so that everybody understood it is not residential, it is commercial, and these are the type of businesses that could go there without ever having to come before council or planning and zoning for zoning variances. So that's really the only interaction I know I give, and I, I don't ever see any other council member do differently. So I think if the public understands and can get a real clear explanation from staff as to why we're not engaging in those type of conversations, it might help public discord and might help with some of that tension that is created. And then also in that, if we can maybe get some direction as to when the public has a question, who should they contact first? Who should they contact second? Kind of like that chain, we all have a chain of command that we follow, so that that way everybody is on the same page, because it's frustrating when you email fifteen people and none of us really know who should answer, none of us know if the first person or the fifth person have already sent an answer. So I think if we could just kind of create a flow chart, or however you want to call it, so that everybody is on the same page and everybody understands this is kind of the process, and this is how we as council will operate when responding to emails. I've even thought about suggesting that council have one council member that will respond, so that then it's like, okay, this is the person who does it. I'm going to nominate Nicole to do that. But just because it would be easier, because sometimes I know all seven of us get the same email, and none of us know how to respond to it, because we don't know if somebody else has responded, because we can't respond to all, because then we create a quorum or like that. So that's all I have. Sorry, I kind of rambled.
Very well said. Councilmember Newell? Councilmember Newell.
First off, I'd like to start out by saying that I don't believe that us as a council should respond to Facebook or any social medias. It's, I got rid of social media for a reason, and I don't think that we need to be up here defending or anything, anything on social media, because it's absolutely crazy. People put whatever they want, and it makes no sense for us to be wasting time with it. Second off, our fire marshal, I'm all in for our fire marshal doing more documentation. We shouldn't have people coming here saying, "A fire marshal said this, a fire marshal said that," and it's not written down. These people need to know when they're going to these buildings, what they're getting. It is their, it is their job to do their due diligence, it really is, but you know, it's too many times that the town of Florence and us have been blamed for businesses when we have no clue. And the fire marshal said this, fire marshal said this. Well, if the fire marshal just says, "No, I didn't," it should be in writing. Anything that the fire marshal has said or promised should be in writing that way. They have a document, we have a document. So there ain't this back and forth where everybody's just coming with stuff they heard or hearsay. You lay down a document, if our fire marshal said it, that's what happens. Just one other thing, I feel that any comments on Call to the Public that the council makes, because it said the council made, that we should all sit down and discuss it before it's made. Had no clue that was going to be read, not saying anything bad or good, but I think we should all make that decision. That is all for me, thank you.
Councilmember Aldenato.
I think pretty much everything's been said, but I'm just going to reiterate, internet is good, right? But you have to use it for good. Okay, there's what he said, what she said, and then what really happened. So just remember that. And if anybody has any questions on how to go about the whole permit process, there's some of us here sitting in our council that have had to go through it, like Ms. Nicole Bucelato. She explained to me last time, you know, actually how she went about when she bought her house here downtown, and how she had to go through the permit process and all that. It's all public knowledge, and it's all, it's a certain way and a certain way to do it. And if you have any questions, Mr. Harvey Kraus will be the one to answer that. If you feel, as a constituent, that you're going to Mr. Harvey Kraus and not getting the answer, or even to our town manager and not getting the answer, you have the chain of command. So just don't feel afraid to reach out to us and say, "Hey, I don't think this was right," or "I didn't understand this," whatever. You know, we're all human beings, so I think there's nothing worth, that's not worth discussing, and just come down to the bottom of something, instead of just assuming stuff or not putting stuff out there that's not correct. So that's all.
Councilmember Bucelato.
Again, I agree with what council has said tonight. We're kind of all on the same page, it seems, when it comes to that. What I would like to ask is, any of the current businesses that are bringing their businesses up to code, applying for permits, anything of that nature, if we can just get an update of where they're at in the process, and if you have been notified of any issues, whether it be a simple email, whether it be in the report the first of the month, whatever it is, that way, we kind of know what's coming and what's happening with the ones that are doing the renovations and opening their businesses. That way, we have some sort of idea if we're asked by the public, if we're asked by the business owners, we just kind of have some idea of what's going on, because I think what the misconception is, is that some of the residents think that we oversee all of that, and we don't. Now, that doesn't mean we can't do something if there's a problem, absolutely, we can give direction, but that's what the department heads are here for, and that's what they're utilized for. That's not what the council is for. Now, if you have a problem, absolutely, reach out to us, and we can get with that department and find out what's going on, but we do not oversee the day-to-day operations of a business that's opening or renovating. On top of that, I was going to ask Lisa if the dates that you emailed us are set for the work sessions.
We're still waiting for confirmation from all council members.
Okay. Other than that, I know from what I've seen up here in six months, that, you know, we may not agree on everything, and we shouldn't, because if we do, there's a problem. But I do know that we do not want to be known as the town that's difficult to work with. I do know that I am super excited for all the businesses opening. I know that at least one or two of us have been at all the openings, and we all try to do really good about at least a couple going and not having a quorum if we don't have to, and you know, so I know that I can see, you know, the change from years past. And I don't want to take 10 steps back, when I know that we've been trying to take 10 steps forward. So if anybody out there is having issues similar to this, please utilize our council email, utilize calling the town manager, or even the clerk for direction, because that's what we want you to do, because we do care and we do want to know. If we don't know, we can't help you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lyson.
I think a lot of it has been said, but I did want to mention that during the budgetary sessions, I did ask specifically for this type of information to be fed to us regularly, because we don't oversee day-to-day operations, we don't know where the status is. I personally was caught off guard when two people asked me on the street what was going on with it, and that they had heard rumors that there was problems, and I had no idea about that. This is before the social media post. And then after the social media post and the email that we received from the owners, I even reached out this weekend, called, left a voicemail, and I never heard back from them. So it is frustrating when we sit up here and the first time we're hearing about it from a business owner or from staff is from either people on the street or on social media, and when there's no communication or dialogue. We, I know that that's something that, like Nicole said, we don't agree on everything, and nor should we, but I think that's been the consistent message that we've all been trying to change about the town of Florence, is making sure that we are business-friendly and doing everything we can to show the support to our local businesses. So it is very frustrating to see that that narrative is being out there, and if there is something that me, as a council member, can do, is conversations we can have, or things that we can have reviewed, well, certainly, I'll be happy to do that, but I need to know about those things before you can make a change. So I think that that communication is very important.
Vice Mayor.
I agree, we need to fix some stuff, so. Aside from that, I attended the East Valley Transportation Committee meeting. A lot of good things happening in transportation here in the next few weeks. The North-South Corridor is supposed to be getting a name, so we should be hearing about a name for the North-South Corridor. Just received from the state $87.5 million for SR-24 expansion. So that's, you know, Quinn Creek and Pinal County will be working to expand that, and then eventually, they'll start working on the, what did they name it now? The Central Arizona Parkway, coming down this way towards Arizona Farms. So things are in motion as far as transportation statewide, and it's all coming. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So Michelle, I do want, Councilmember Corde, I want to say thank you for asking to put that item on, because I could see how it's beneficial, especially when we're having the dialogue and engagement when somebody's coming up, and, you know, we want to respond, because as you mentioned, like, we don't want one side there. So I think that's good, that's helpful. So thank you, Lisa, for putting that together at the next council meeting. I also just wanted to, you know, reiterate, when there is something going on, you can reach out to staff, you can reach out to council. Like, to hear or see things on social media doesn't necessarily mean, which none of us did, except I believe Councilmember Bucelato said, you know, you can send an email to council, that's not the place to have dialogue and discussion. I did see another business owner that had commented, you know, like, when you go and you make changes or updates to building, that can cause, you know, other, other things to occur. So that's why there has to be that working together, that communication between staff and the business owners. I did notice, and I didn't know Councilmember Bucelato if you saw, but in Harvey's department head report, like, there were a few other businesses. Okay, perfect. So that's always another opportunity and avenue to see any other updates or requirements, or where we're at with other buildings, or things that could be experienced. Lastly, I did receive an email, and I did forward it on to the town manager regarding the noise ordinance, and she falls, you'll remember, probably, maybe about six, six months ago, it was around New Year's Eve, another resident had come forward and was asking about noise ordinances as well, this was before your time here. So I think with, you know, the three or four different residents that have come forward and have requested our council look at our noise ordinance, I'd like to see some other options that other municipalities implement regarding their noise ordinance. It was communicated that they were told that having a child's birthday party at 12 o'clock in the afternoon could result in, if they were called back out again, like, a class, whatever misdemeanor, and it would stay on their record for up to 99 ye, I don't know, it was a lot. So I just, I'd hate to see somebody negatively impacted for having an anniversary celebration, a child's birthday party, you know, or a New Year's party at a reasonable time of day with reasonable decibel noise. And with the improvements of technology, I feel that we could implement something that says, hey, within a certain amount of decibels during certain timeframes, rather than town of Florence, we're quiet 24/7 unless we're having a music festival downtown. So that's all I have to say, I'd like to see that on the next agenda as well. And with that, we need a motion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? We're dismissed.